...today and help them get home safely. And Lord, we just ask you to bring us the rain that we desperately need. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, thank you everybody for coming. At this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes.
I'd like to speak, Judge.
Yes, sir.
This meeting that is constitutionally guaranteed as a process of debate where opposed opinions are expressed and considered by all parties involved here. We have had in the past some opinions that were expressed very strongly down on both sides. So consequently, I'm going to ask the court and the public out here to respect each other. That's one thing that the courthouse courtroom doc, the quorum document that you read the other day, Judge. Set forth, bottom line is to respect all parties involved here. So let's see if we can honor that, honor that agreement. I'd also like to speak, if you don't mind, concerning the tax rate. Can I continue?
Yes, sir, you still have about a minute and a half.
I have here, and I want to thank the S D N on this because they're who I go to. Even though occasionally they'll have misquotes in there, they try their best. Steve was a very good reporter, appreciate him. I have here a frontline paper, front page paper here dated Tuesday, August 21st, 2018. And in here is a picture of a fat old man, man named Mel Hurd, next to Sean McCowen, who's quite photogenic. Two lovely ladies, Delva Calvin, Melody Appleton, addressing the court supporting the 4498 rate increase. Because as we were told last year that the county was bankrupt, we need, y'all needed the money. This, this thing did pass and the funds that were, that were raised was used for various items. One of them being a 2% raise for the employees, Scurry County employees. Today, one approximately, one year later, we're back at the same position we were in last year. Want to raise additional monies, one of them being for a 3% raise for the county employees. I realize that, that the raise does not take all $2 million or possibly what is being raised here, but it needs to be addressed, in my opinion, and considered. I'd like to compliment Melva Calvin for her turning some of her budget back into, she's an efficient department head that tries her best to stay within her budget. So does Melody, I'll compliment her too. So with that spoken, I want y'all all to consider what they're proposing here and we'll go forth with this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. All right, anybody else want to speak on a non-agenda item? A non-agenda item, if you're wanting to speak for the public hearing, that'll be in just a few minutes. If you want to speak on a non-agenda.
Yeah, it's a non-agenda.
Okay.
I'm seeking for a friend of mine who is a resident in the county. And he noticed, he plays golf out at the country club. And he noticed that the change house and the pool had been dozed. Change house has been torn down. And he was wondering what was happening with that. The county was behind it, said he saw a track hoe out there doing the work and was kind of wondering if that was the county piece of the equipment. So he's a little, how should I say? He's, he's perplexed. He feels like that a lot of money was put into that country club not too long ago. And now for things just to be torn down, he's wondering about the clubhouse as well. What's the situation with that? I haven't heard anything. Last I heard about it was about the black mold situation. But have no idea, you know, what the county plans to do with that building. Are they going to tear it down as well? And then we have no structures out there. We just have a golf course and a pro shop out there. So he just wanted me to ask that. And I know you can't address it because it's not on the agenda, but hopefully at some point it will be addressed and let the public know what's happening with the country club out there. He grew up in Snyder. He remembers days swimming out there in the pool, playing tennis and things like that. Now to see it going downhill is kind of a concern to him, so.
Thank you, Ms. Nessie.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to notice that the Snyder Volunteer Fire Department just two hours ago posted a Facebook post about a video of the horrible fire and said, "This is our fire potential right now." So I just wanted to know or just propose that the county look at a possible burn ban because of the situation. I know a lot of the surrounding counties are under it.
Thank you, Ms. Nessie. Right, anything else? All right, we'll go ahead and discuss and consider any precinct project scheduling staffing. Is there anything that needs to be addressed? I guess that.
All we do is fight fires lately.
Yeah. That has been discussed, the burn ban. That is something that's being looked at, so. Talked to the fire marshal and the fire chief yesterday. They are gathering more information right now. It will very possibly be on next week's agenda for a burn ban. So, so that information is out there. Anything else?
We're just doing what we can do until it rains.
Absolutely. All right, we will conduct the first public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 proposed tax rate. Start that. 10:08?
10:07.
10:07? Okay, anybody that filled out a form, would you like to speak on the proposed tax rate? Mr. Shaw?
Yes, I'm against the proposed rate. If you do not adopt the effective rate, I have petitions here ready to circulate.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Ms. Nessie?
I have several questions, I guess, in regards to the budget, as I've gone through it. I know that the court is asking for a 3% COLAR, cost of living adjustment, in a proposed budget. And I know in previous court, it's been stated that by constituents that they didn't feel like it should be in across the board, that if certain employee needed a raise, that they, you know, they wish the court would just give that to that, you know, that department or that person. And the court responded by saying that they wish that that was an option, but that's not an option. They have to do it across the board. Is that, is my understanding correct?
That's my understanding, Ms. Nessie.
Okay. Is that just the cost of living adjustment that has to be given across the board? Or can raises, do raises have to be? Because I mean, cost of living adjustment is, is technically a little bit different terminology than a raise. Do raises have to be given across the board?
In our personnel policy, it does.
Okay, so my question then is, if in your personnel policy, when you have to give raises across the board, how was it that the LBN at the health clinic was given a raise?
That was not considered a raise, that was keeping the same rate of pay that that person was already making.
Okay. And so that's your personnel policy that, for the county, that you have to give raises and cost of living adjustments across the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's not like a government agency policy or something for?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe, I believe.
Okay, so if it is a personnel policy, it can be changed by the court. True or not true?
If it is personnel policy, that's accurate.
Okay, so that's my suggestion on this one thing is change that policy so that you don't have to give them across the board. Address each individual person according to their skills or something like that, so that.
I understand what you're saying. It's a little more difficult in a government type situation, though, to do something where it's individually based, so.
Difficult, understand, impossible? Yes, no?
I'm going to have to do more research on whether it's actually possible to do that.
Okay, my next.
Sure. One second, Ms. Nessie.
I totally disagree with what Judge said. I know he weighs farther than me.
No, sir.
But years ago, they done what you're saying. I've got the figures down there in my deal where they did it. It was called a
Merit?
Merit raise. And now then, it was changed. So anything can be changed back if you've got the votes to do it. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a bad thing. I think if you get a raise and it's across the board, 99.9% of the time, you're going to deserve it. So I don't think just because you say you do different. I mean, you, you, you say that it's a merit raise and then across the board raise, but most time you, everybody's going to get a raise. But it can be done. I just wanted to set the record.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Section, they talk about findings of independent auditor's results. And on several different occasions, they talk about a material weakness in internal controls. And as far as deficiency in internal controls. The facts could be erroneous entries resulting in material audit adjustments. And I know that it states that the corrective actions are going to be, be put in place by the county and for the county policy. My concern is that you're asking for more money and the auditor's report is saying that there is already a lack or weakness of internal controls. And one of them specifically states is that a possible effect is that expense is not properly approved prior to a payment. A cause is all checks do not contain dual signatures as required by county policy. So I understand that the, that the corrective action on the county is that they're going to implement county policy. But how is it that you expect us to just say, okay, they're going to follow county policy now, when the problem is already not following county policy?
Okay.
So we talk about, and this is just very concerning to me, when you're asking for more money and we've already been told by the independent auditor that there's lack of internal controls.
Those specific, and that was in one particular area, correct? Those items have been addressed. It's not a countywide thing, it was one particular area. So regardless of the amount of the budget, whether it's up or down or the same, the, the same thing needs to be addressed and that it has been addressed, so.
Okay. I have another quick question or, anyhow. One of the proposed, requested capital assets is $30,000 for a new fuel truck out at the airport. Is that correct? Does that fuel truck currently run?
It's a 1985 model, I believe.
I'm sorry, that was the question, what model? Does it currently run?
Okay, yes, it does. However, there are multiple issues with that vehicle. The maintenance has gotten to the point where it's not feasible to keep maintaining that vehicle. They, you can't run the PTO, that's one issue. There are other issues as well, so.
Okay, so, but it doesn't ever leave the airport property, correct or not?
Correct, as far as I know. I can't answer that for sure.
Okay, so as far as, we could make repairs to the vehicle that doesn't.
Repairs have been made multiple times.
Okay. And is there any idea how long it would, how the 30, for the proposed $30,000 but, or expense? Any idea how long it's been since we spent $30,000 on it?
Over the last several years, that amount has been spent on it.
Okay, I mean like.
In repairs and maintenance, yes, ma'am. It doesn't make sense to keep making repairs on a vehicle that continues to go downhill that once that equipment stops, then we have to come in and do a whole different process for it. It's the same thing with any other piece of equipment. If it's to the point where it's just completely worn out and you have to keep replacing part after part after part, doesn't make any sense to keep it. You replace it at that point.
Okay. The next question is that I saw that the software for maintenance for all departments is going, proposed to go from $85,000 up to $278,000 to increase to $193,000. You know what that includes?
That is switching softwares. All right, we are currently with one software program. We're, we have already signed a contract with another company to go to a different software. It's not just about expense. If we stayed with the same software company, we'd have to spend, I think it was $270,000 just on servers, okay? And then you get into the issue of ease of use. So if we are having to build all of the, add all of the different little programs in there that we are required to do right now, you are spending more man hours, more time doing that than your actual job. With the new program that we're going to, they build everything, they do it all. So we don't have to take away from the actual job that we're doing to spend time working on that program. And that was about four months ago, something like that, we agreed to do that. And yes, it is going up, but for next year, but it'll go down, back down after that. And we, we spend an incredible amount of money on what we currently have. And then they want us to upgrade with these servers, so it's just more money after more money.
Right. And I have a quick question about, I saw, and I can't find it at this exact moment, but there's in the proposed budget for Christmas lights again this year? Is that correct? Is there any reason why we, I mean, I know it's not a huge amount, but is there any reason why we couldn't reuse last year's Christmas light?
No, there's no reason why we couldn't. That's, that's the issue. It's been, that has been in the past, they've been gotten rid of each year, so.
I'm sorry, they've been gotten every year? They're disposed?
Yes, when you hang the lights off the, off the building the way they do, they degrade, they fall apart. So we're going to change that. We're not going to have lights hanging off in the future because we don't want to continue to spend that same amount of money on something we're just going to throw away.
Okay.
And that's, you know, I don't know what to say about that, but that's what's been done in the past.
Okay, I, so just for my personal clarification, every year when we buy, we buy Christmas light new to put them up and then throw them away?
Correct. Not anymore. Is that it?
Yeah, just my two cents. I would say that that constitutes frivolous spending.
Thank you. All right, anybody else that's filled out a form that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Nessie?
Probably clarification or just information. I was looking at the budgets for each of the precincts. And although this is not a lot of the money, it's just, I'm just curious about it. Precincts one, three, and four has $0 budgeted for communications. I don't know what that is. However, precinct two has $1,100 budgeted for that. So can you clarify what is under communications and why one precinct out of four needs, you know, money budgeted for that?
Well, would y'all have any under your communications lines?
Nope, I mean, there's money in it because that's what we get, the internet.
Internet and phones and stuff like that.
Well, it may be under utilities for some of them. Precinct two communications is their internet and phone line. The rest of them, I believe, are, they have been billing theirs under the utilities for everything. So each one is allowed to.
So it's just a difference of.
Separate communications that they each have internet at their precincts, but except for maybe four. Four, I don't have. You don't have it either? So two and three have it, but four and one don't have it. But three is billed under, excuse me, under utilities and two is billed under communications. That's how they code theirs.
Okay. Next thing is, you notice that, you know, you have an IT department and the budget has been increased for that department this year. And I'm kind of curious why, and I brought this up last year. The county has a website, scurry.tex.gov. You have a link on there for county news. Well, the last time that there was any news on there was 2014. How is that helpful? We have a link on there and, you know, you go there looking for news and there hasn't been any on there for five years updated. So, but we have an IT department that we're, you know, funding a fair amount of money. So it's like, people do look at that, I do.
Right, our IT department is one person and he doesn't just do the website. And as far as that particular part of it, I know what you're talking about. That, that needs to be fixed. We do need to put more news out onto that particular portion of the, of the website. Now, when I say he's one person and that's not his only job, I mean, he takes care of all of the county's computers and servers and all of that. So he's not always just in one place doing that one thing.
Well, then it probably better to have nothing on there, like no link, than have a link and have nothing for five years on there, right? So, because I brought this up last year too, so nothing has changed in a whole year's time.
Okay, I wasn't aware that.
Under his workload or?
Okay, I wasn't aware that you brought it up last year.
I did. So, and I went there and looked again, I thought, well, this is not helpful. So it'd be either better to, if you can't keep it up, remove it. So it doesn't make you look bad, right? Because you can't keep your stuff up.
I will look into that.
So, because it's, you know, I mean, a lot of people, social media, you know, websites are where they get a lot of information.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Ms. Nessie?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else that filled out a form? Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing at 10:18?
10:24.
10:24, my goodness, I'm off. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. We're going to skip B for now. We're going to have probably recess here in a few minutes and we're going to discuss that here a little while. We're going to have somebody come in. We'll discuss and consider consolidated precincts for voting and the constitutional amendments. This was, goes in line with what we've done previously on the consolidating. We just have a notice to consolidate them. You, do you want to speak anything on that?
It's just our standard, we're, yeah, we, we were not able to get all the paperwork done and get everything pre-approved for the countywide for this election. So we're just going to do our normal four precincts here in town like we do on all small elections. And then praying, hopefully we'll get our countywide by the March primary.
And we are consolidating, we do five and six?
We take, the library will be five, six, and seven. The county barn will be eight, nine, and 10. South side of the Coliseum will be 11, 12, and 13. And the north side will be 14 and 15.
I'm impressed.
It's taken me a few years.
Judge had to make a motion that we consolidated precincts for voting, but it's not on the constitutional amendments.
We're not going to do the executive session. Let's go ahead and do the line of transfers and budget amendments.
I have one line of transfer. One transfer for precinct four, load and bridge, for $20,000 going into his maintenance and repairs out of his operating, and it was to repair a piece of equipment.
Is there a motion? Accounts payable.
Total accounts payable, $129,023.05. And the Citibank card is also being processed, $12,853.37.
Paying bills. All right, we're going to recess for about 10 minutes and then we'll come back and talk about the deed restrictions at Maverick West. Thank you, everybody, it's kind of, I appreciate you.
You have one? You have one? You ate it? Jim got one, so you use his.
And we have a second place. We need it in time, but we'll have it for the next one.
We're discussing with the changing of the Maverick West's laws. To see.
Somebody can build on two.
Just on the perimeter is what we're good at, is what I'm understanding. That was something.
Somebody wants to buy two lots and build another one.
There's, I think there's more than one.
Only one, one lot, well, it's okay.
But everybody has to agree. Everybody that owns property out there has to agree that that's. I'm not really sure. I think, I think precinct four was one of those. Melissa, Melissa is the one that's selling our.
Yeah, but would it be somebody that want to build, make a house this way?
I don't think it's that. I think they just want to.
Well, how wide are the lots?
If you want to know, that's actually where one of the health clinic we have taped out that we will love because we're a family, it's not being known for lots. It will be now, because it's 25 restriction on corners. So we're 25 this way, 25 in the front, it's on side. About 10 feet too big. And if we're going to make it wider, yeah, but we're making the house smaller and that's our problem. We live out there right now, it's just not. So it's like you're lots, lots of.
It's not that you want to build a mega house.
Not a mega house.
Yeah, which is not.
We did, began with, for the people.
It's still going worse than it's kind of.
But they need to always be there. I mean, I'm all toast.
Yes, but I don't think they're asking for it. Just, just the possibility, the outside.
But I think that I keep. I don't know what our original purpose was.
Yeah.
People coming to town. First time back. It's something out, that's not why.
But every, every person that owns property there will have to agree without.
Even the people that sell.
Everybody. Everybody. So i- if they all agree, then it's not a big thing. If, if one doesn't agree, you can't. That's my understanding.
All, all the question is, can they? They just wanna be able to do it. They just wanna be able, they're not.
Right.
They, they mean they're going to, but they wanna be able to do it.
And I believe it's just the perimeter, certain areas, yeah, we're talking. Just, just here, just be here.
Understand that. What, what was she saying?
Family's growing and she was. Yeah, no, you're probably right.
No, I'm sure.
I believe it's here. I believe it's here.
So how long?
So this is right. But I can't see.
No, I know. I guess.
I guess.